Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, which later teach each other this.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abernathy.
President.
Bush. Duffin.
Here.
Levak. Matola.
Here.
O'Connell.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Schoolnick.
Here.
Tedford Andrew. Absent. Tedford Jim. Wendis.
Here.
Winkler.
Here.
Your Honor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We have anybody here for Citizens Forum?
Mike Winkler, twenty got you dry. Vernon has problems, but few people know about them because newspapers have declined and Vernon's mayors have tightly controlled what information gets out. Vernon used to have a reporter assigned to it. There used to be investigative reporting about Vernon. The decline in newspaper staffs has eliminated investigative reporting about towns. Vernon's mayors have been Republicans since two thousand seven, over the last seventeen years. Our town administrator wrote in two thousand twelve, "It has come to my attention that council members are directly making inquiries to or requests of department heads. I would ask councilpeople contact administration prior to requesting information or services from department heads." That policy also served as a clear warning to department heads not to talk to council people. Department heads know that even when the mayor says council members can talk to a department head, it's safer not to. Department heads know not to disagree with anything the mayor has said. Information about town needs we formerly received from the town budget discussions has been eliminated. Formerly, the department's proposed expenditure column in the budget and the mayor's proposed expenditure columns were different. Thirty years ago, at town council budget meetings, department heads requested money for expenditures the mayor didn't support, such as additional equipment or more maintenance for equipment, roads, and buildings, and the town council made the decision. Now the department's requests and the mayor's recommendations are identical, and we only see what the mayor wants. I remember Robert Kleinhand sitting right there and arguing with Mayor Jason McCoy in the middle of a council meeting about the road budget. I have been a Vernon Town Council. At my retirement dinner, a former Vernon department head told everyone how he got in trouble for being seen talking to me. Under the current mayor, several town employees have told me they were going to continue talking to me even though they had been told not to. Another way to prevent information from reaching the public is to prohibit town council members from speaking at Citizens Forum. I remember when Marie Herps, as a town councillor, would speak at Citizens Forum and let the public know what was going on. She infuriated mayors, and now the town council's rules of order prohibit town council members from speaking at Citizens Forum. The people who really know what's going on can't speak at the most effective forum for reaching people interested in town government. Vernon's mayor also handles in executive or secret sessions issues that state law requires to be handled in public session. Finished teacher contracts, for example, legally must be discussed in public sessions, but the mayor handles them in secret or executive sessions. Yes, Vernon has problems, but given the lack of reporting and the tight control on what information gets out of town government, you can't blame citizens for knowing about the problems, for not knowing about the problems. Thank you.
It's nighttime. You know, my name's Janaro. I live in my car, so I don't have an address. I know y'all see me with my daughter, but I gotta take her sometimes. Can't leave her in New York all the time. But you can't move here to chit chat, man. I didn't really come over here to do a lot. I know Mr. Winkler got something going on over there. But Rochester's bad, man. Y'all is bad. Y'all better be ready, have some candles and stuff, because it just snowed a foot and a half out there and it's about to snow another two feet. I pray to God Connecticut get hit real hard, just like New York got hit last night, so y'all can understand what people a lot they go with. They're stuck in their driveways. They can't go to work. They can't do anything. The state is junky. The DOT out there is garbage. I told them their mayor out there in Rochester, his name is Malik, told him straight up, y'all garbage out here. I'll tell you something, Mayor, you run this town very well to me. I don't know what's going on behind closed doors. Everything got nothing to do with me. You know, but I know that the DOT does everything what they're supposed to do. I see EMS do what they're supposed to do. I see the chief and the captain and them doing what they gotta do. One thing about it, that all public citizens out here, I believe they are protected because you've been mayor, but because I do drive around a lot at night and the cops do, they do their job. I don't know what goes on behind closed doors. It got me thinking a little bit, but I'm old school. They've been doing this forever, Mr. Winkler. Oh, Mr., I forgot your last name, but you know, I understand you care, but some things you can't stop, some things you can, and I know you want the public to know. But some just public members don't know how to read, or they don't like to read, or they just don't like to study, and they just depend on other people when they're capable of doing it themselves. And that's a problem with a lot of individuals today. They must learn how to read and write and get up and do it themselves. But, um, in recycling, I've been finding a lot of cat litter inside the recycling, a lot. People are throwing their cat litter, their dog shit inside there. Just letting y'all know, I do go through all y'all. I mean, I, I, my councillor member, Mike, he leaves me bottles in the thing. I go through all y'all's recycling bins. If y'all think I don't go through y'all crap, I do go through y'all crap. Trust me. I take some of your, some of your food, some of y'all foods if y'all have it. And I appreciate y'all very much for it, because I really do need it, because I don't have it like that anymore. So, you know, I'm not here to complain or nothing, but I do watch what goes on. I do like this town. I do like the people in it. And I do, I do like the power that's running it, you know. Back then, I was a bum, you know, punk, you know, trying to challenge jurisdiction, you know, which I know I can't, but that's not what I want to do. It's not what I'm here for. You have a lot of bums there out there. They're hungry. They're thirsty. They're willing to, I'm telling you now, they're willing to steal. I talked to a lot of them. They're freezing out there, man. They've been breaking into cars lately. You know, it happened. Just want to let you know, you know. They've been going up behind the courthouse, up in those houses up there, sleeping in there. The ones that are abandoned, but they're locked. I know they're owned because I go to the next door and I check who owns them and so forth and stuff like that. These people need a place to sleep, you know. They do. I mean, luckily that I have a good family and that I got a good BMW that keeps me warm at night. But my family's keeps me warm, but I'll tell you something, Mayor, if I was really hungry, 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 your town would be so messed up with me. I wouldn't mess your town up. Literally, because I'm really smart. You know I'm smart. I'm very smart. But people gotta be healthy. They do. There's gotta be a budget put aside for like shelter or something, you know. Just want to let you know, you know. I can't protect all y'all. I can't protect all y'all stuff. And don't think people don't drive around Vernon from Hartford and from Springfield. They don't, they don't look in y'all yards and some of y'all leave y'all garage doors open like it's okay. It's not okay to leave your garage doors open because you live in a nice white neighborhood, and you think police come through there, nothing can't happen. All I'm saying is, if I can drive down there and go through your recycling bin and see your garage door open, I don't steal. You work hard for your property. I love you for that. That's yours. You earned it. None of my business, but other people don't think like you. You know, be mindful with your property. Be mindful what you got outside. People are not the same anymore. They're not. Mayor, I'll let you go with that one, okay?
Yep.
I'm going to Rochester on Sunday. I'll be recycling all night this week.
Oh, boy.
I'm gonna have her with me, because she wants to stay with me in the car. I don't know why, even though she can go to my cousin's house down the street. She wants to stay with me because she wants to know how I live.
Okay.
So, just want to let you know, okay?
Thank you.
Y'all have a great night.
You too. Anybody else for Citizens Forum? Come on up.
My name's Tom Seale. Well, I've been here before. I usually say about the same thing. Shelter is not making a problem. People that need help. Because like I said, I've been here before. There's a lot of people that don't have a place to live. I live at Court Towers, which was built in fifty-nine, and they didn't do insulation back then. The people who live there are usually over fifty, so we've already experienced that. We're not going to complain. We're going to deal with it. But it's not really what I would like for my parents. And takes five, ten minutes to get hot water. There's things at Court Towers that I've lived a lot of places. That's the worst place I've ever lived. Because either too hot in the summer, too cold in the winter, because they have winter, they have summer windows, which you'd save a lot of money on heating and cooling if you had stone windows. And elevators are garbage. They break down all the time. People get stuck out. So it's not a place.
Have you, have you brought this information to the board? Housing Authority Board? You may, you want to, may want to go talk to them. There's been a lot of good changes over there.
Not really.
Give them some time.
I tell them, they see it. They're there. But they're there during the day. They're not there at night. So they don't know how it is this night. Because they've already eaten, because it brings them bad. And like I said, there's summer windows there, so it gets very cold. And like I also said earlier, people are over fifty, so they've already experienced it. They're not going to complain. That isn't where I would want my relatives to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Who else? I'm going to close Citizens Forum, but I am going to make some comments uh, from the first speaker, who continues to say things that just, just aren't, aren't true. Number one, I haven't been the mayor for seventeen years. I wasn't here in two thousand twelve. I got elected two thousand, for two thousand thirteen. And, uh, we don't hide things. All you gotta do is read the, uh, go on our website, and you'll see most of the stuff we've done, including executive session items. You know, we're very, we're a very open book. As far as talking to department heads, department heads are to notify us when they talk to a town council person. And the reason they do that is because sometimes information was used against those department heads. It was weaponized. And it's for their, I want to note so that I can do everything I can to protect my employees. Thank you. We're going to move on. We're actually going to go into executive session in the beginning this time. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, the town council pursuant to the authority given in Connecticut General Statute one dash two hundred six A, hereby moves to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations relative to the appointment of the town assessor position, invites Don Masilek, Assistant Town Administrator, to attend. Yes, um, do you want to do it officially and have the second or? Because they seconded it. All right. All right. So, uh, let's see. Vites Don Masilek, Assistant Town Administrator, and John Kleinhand, Town Administrator, to attend.
Had my mic off. I was we'll be back.
Mr. Mayor, the town council pursuant to Chapter ten, Section three, and Chapter eleven, Section one and four of the Vernon Town Charter approves Mayor Daniel A. Champagne's appointment of Tom Helms? Todd Helms, okay, as assessor for the town of Vernon and further approves the corresponding wage tape.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem.
Sit down and use the mic.
Members of the town council, um, excited to be here. Um, looking forward to working with everybody here and stuff and everything. It's a small community and stuff and everything, so I hope to get to know it well.
Anybody have any questions for Todd? No? All right. Thank you. Okay. All right. Did you have?
Hi, welcome to Vernon. What was the big draw for you?
Sir.
Excuse me. What was your big draw? Why did you come to Vernon?
Um, I actually know some of the assessors around here and stuff and everything. It's a small community and stuff and everything. I'm very well with Stafford and Talon and stuff. It's a beautiful area, so. Just looking to get used to, to actually visiting a new town and learning the history and stuff. Thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Unanimous. So you want to say, take a second, just walk around and introduce yourself to the people sitting in front of you? It'll take about two seconds to do that. The camera, we, we got a new camera system, and the camera was broken, so the only one that was working was this one, but we, it's repaired now. We actually got a brand new system put in place, and they were finishing it that day, and they couldn't figure out the camera. Thank you. All right. I got a couple things. On your desk this evening is a flyer inviting you to the Student Art Showcase at the Vernon Community Arts Center. The event, uh, opening reception for elementary students is Thursday, March thirteenth, seven to eight P M. The opening reception for high school and middle school is March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, from seven to eight P M. Family and friends are welcome. Exhibition dates are also on the flyer. Does everybody have one? Okay, good. Uh, the town of Vernon now has Jersey Mikes located at the old Weight Watchers location at Tri-City Plaza. Think we had a little shift down there. Uh, if you haven't been there, uh, to a Jersey Mikes, they're excellent. Uh, reminder, E C H N and Vernon Community Network invite you to Black History Breakfast Celebration, February twentieth, this Thursday, eight thirty M to ten thirty A M. Rockville High School, right, Rockville High School, uh, Rockville General Hospital Cafeteria. The keynote speaker will be Dr. Diane Clary Kearney, the Director of Adult Education and Equity for Manchester Public Schools. Um, there was a question asked from one of our members. And that's about, um, the rules for council members speaking, voting on funds for organizations which they sit on the board as members. Uh, if you look under, um, the ethics rules for the town of Vernon, uh, Section two dash sixty-three states, the relevant part, um, so that I believe you were all given copies of the ethics when you came in and you signed for them, yeah, um, but it, it, it. If you have a, an interest in an organization, you're part of that organization, essentially, you really can't hold on what the organization's doing. This is from Lou Spadacini. So, um, it all falls under ethics. The budget dates are on the agenda tonight, uh, for your consideration. And the available areas for Vernon residents, which is something we voted down last time. What we did is we went through that list to make sure there's any updates or anything. And every, we, we are updating that list this week, but there's no additions to what's out there already. Some people will say, well, the sewer plant, which last time somebody asked me about that, the sewer plant was under construction since beginning of COVID. And now it's a closed facility. Essentially, at night, the facility is not manned by people because it's all, we, we switched it. So without a town employee unseen, that, that site is not open. Okay? Uh, we will be adding a new site, and that's at the, the citizens block, and that one will be added. And the paperwork and everything is also up to date on that. All right. Let's move on. Those, it's not a back and forth. It's just me making my comments, but what's, it's, it's really not a back and forth on this part. If you want to talk to me afterwards, we can talk. Okay? All right. Let's continue on. Let's go to consent.
Mr. Mayor, motion to move the consent agenda as written.
Seconded by Laura. Uh, are we pulling any of those? Nope. All right. All those in favor? Unanimous. All right. New business number one.
Mr. Mayor, the town council, consistent with the town of Vernon Personnel Rules and Regulations, Section one, sorry, Section four dot one B, entitled Job Descriptions, hereby adopts the job descriptions of Assistant Town Administrator, Assistant Human Resource Director, Human Resources Specialist, and Administrative Assistant slash H R Assistant.
Seconded by Mary Ann. So, um, Don and John are going to basically go into this as to what the need is. We had the open position for the, the investigator that, that, when he left, and we have not filled that yet. Um, I basically reached out to Dawn and, and asked her, because she's H R, how do we best use that position? And, uh, so she's here with John to go into what these four positions, now some of their, two of them are already work, three of the positions are filled. There's only one open position. Okay? So, go ahead, guys.
Yeah, just, uh, through the mayor, um, I just hit my three months as Town Administrator, so very excited about that. Um, but, you know, the mayor empowered myself and Dawn to, uh, take a look first, as we're talking about townwide in terms of our strategic planning, uh, what we're looking at for employees, but first we started with the, uh, Human Resources Department. Um, and I think that this plan works for the town, um, as we continue in the direction that we're going, when we're talking about cross-training and the different opportunities. Um, but really bringing on this Assistant Director of, of, uh, H R, um, it's the right, it's the right move, uh, for our town. So, Dawn, if you want to explain any of the changes specifically to the council, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Through the mayor, uh, we did have the H R Specialist Investigator position, um, originally, and that is the vacant position. And through cross-training, some of those, um, some of those functions, Donna Madsen, who is the, was the H R Assistant, uh, has taken on. And so, uh, this is just kind of combining the old H R Assistant position and the H R Specialist position in exactly what she's doing now and has been doing since May, uh, when the position became vacant. Uh, the H R Assistant position, uh, has been downgraded to more of a, um, a less technical role and more in a support role, uh, to help and assist in Donna, uh, in, in more of the tracking aspect of things, data entry, uh, more of the clerical work that's involved, uh, but does take a lot of time. So that's what we're looking at in that regard. And then taking the elements of the Specialist Position or the, yeah, the H R Specialist Position, upgrading those to be more of an assistant to myself, to do the more intricate, um, work for Human Resources, helping department heads, um, conducting investigations, um, assisting in probably sitting in on contract negotiations, uh, contract interpretations, personnel rules and regulations, and that aspect of things. In, 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 in all of this, we would be cross-training one another and be looking at succession planning as well.
And just real quick as well, there's so many unfunded mandates coming from the state of Connecticut, um, that we're grappling with from the H R, uh, perspective. Um, so I think bolstering our staff with these different positions, uh, is what we're needed to combat kind of some of the stuff coming from Hartford, uh, to the town of Vernon as well.
I, I think this, one of the big things with the assistant is, um, we do all of the pension for the entire town, including the board side. And, uh, that can take up quite a bit of time, and Dawn's been doing all of that, as well as everything, all, all the rest of her jobs. So we're trying to push some of those bigger things, uh, share those bigger jobs with this assistant, because we have to divide this work up. Dawn's here all the time. And, uh, Dawn, do you want to add anything on the other positions?
Mayor, which, which position? That's the Assistant Director?
I, I think the other one, just, just so everybody knows, the, um, this, the Administrative Assistant and the H R Assistant, that's the cross-training position. So she's already here, and she works, uh, not in H R, but we're going to cross-train so that we have another person who can step in, especially helping with, when we get new employees onboarding. Did you already answer that, or did I?
Mayor, some of it I did, but, um, a- again, with succession planning, Donna and I are very close in age, so, um.
I know.
It's.
Very young. Yeah. All right. Questions? Can, what's the pay difference between the open position and the one we're bringing in?
Through the mayor, um, so I believe the N seven F is in the mid seventies range. Um, mid to upper seventies range, and, um, and then the Assistant, uh, Human Resources Director would start around ninety-six, six twelve.
Yep. All right. I see a hand up. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Well, you're always here anyway. Well, thanking you for your being here. Um, if I was to draw an org chart for these positions, um, how would that look? Like, how, how is the reporting?
Through the mayor, so it's the mayor and.
I know that part. I mean.
For your department.
For your.
For my department.
Like after, so you report to John, right?
I report to John.
After that, these three positions, how do they fit in?
So the Assistant H R Director would report to me, and then the H R Specialist would report to both myself and the Assistant H R Director. And the Administrative Assistant, H R Assistant, that's a bifurcated position, and, and always started as a bifurcated position. So it would report to, um, Ms. Wheelock for functions within the mayor's department, and then it would report to me for the Human Resources aspect of it.
Okay, so, and, so in the past, the Specialist Investigator reported to you. Okay. So it's really no, not too much difference except just the new.
Through the mayor, it's correct. It's, it's realigning the, um, the duties and aspects, and then also, um, elevating the position to relieve me of, um, some of my job to assist John and to expand our role in things that we haven't been able to do, that we would like to do for Vernon and for our employees.
Okay, and I know this role's been expanding and the job is becoming more intricate, and I think that you figure you want to go home at some time during the day. I don't know why you want to do that, but.
Once, once.
Once, once, like, like five, eight P M on Saturday night till six A M Sunday morning or something. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Mary Ann? Mary Ann?
Do town side and board side, right?
So through the mayor, we, including part-time personnel, roughly about two hundred and seventy-five, and that does not include the Board of Education for pension purposes.
And health insurance and stuff, is that a split or are you both?
Through the mayor, the health insurance is handled by the Human Resources Department for the Board of Education. We handle the town side and that range is anywhere from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five employees.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, guys. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby schedules the following budget meeting dates for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget deliberations. Thursday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five, Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, Thursday, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, Monday, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, Wednesday, April second, twenty twenty-five, and Thursday, April third, twenty twenty-five, with a start time of seven P M. And Saturday, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, with a start time of nine A M. Public hearings will be Saturday, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, with a start time of nine oh five A M. And Thursday, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, with a start time of seven oh five P M. To hear to hear comment and answer questions relative to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Town of Vernon budget. All budget meetings and public hearings will be held in the town council chambers, third floor, Town Hall, Fourteenth Park Place, Vernon, Connecticut.
Seconded by Laura. Any questions on the dates? No, all those in favor? Unanimous. Brian?
Pursuant to the Charter, Chapter Four, Annual Town Meeting, the town council hereby schedules Tuesday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, as the annual town meeting and final public hearing to hear comment and answer questions relative to the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Town of Vernon budget. The Tuesday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five public hearing and annual town meeting will be held at the Rockville High School Auditorium, Loveland Hill Road, Vernon, Connecticut, beginning at seven P M.
Seconded by Laura. Any questions on that? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to sign any and all documents relative to the one-year lease modification with the Vernon Community Arts Center.
Seconded by Mary Ann. Who's speaking? Dr. Buckson? Is that you? Case cases, any questions? Hold on one side. So basically, what what this part, the first part is, is where we are extending the lease by another year. And that's what we're here to talk about.
Mayor, may I invite my treasurer up?
Yes. Wherever you need.
So thank you for having me here this evening. With me also, Kathy Stevens is our treasurer and also I am pleased to share that I have many members of the Arts Center East Board with me as well this evening. So as you know, nonprofits are critical and very vital to or to communities. They build social capital and that's exactly what Arts Center East does. Our mission is to bring the arts to everyone through education events, exhibits, and performances. So that's how we help Vernon build social capital. So I'm going to give you some examples of how we do that. So I'm going to walk you through the photographs that you have in front of your packet. So the first page, that's a workshop that we offered this past year. This is a botanical workshop where the participants made succulent terrariums. So we do this quite often. This is just one example of some of the educational programs that we offer at Arts Center East. Page two is a lovely photograph of our student photographer. He won first place. He stopped by the Arts Center last week with his father. His photograph was entitled The Colosseum. And I cannot tell you how proud he was and his father that he actually had a photograph that was on display at Arts Center East. The next is the art collector on page three and the artist. So how validating it is is it for an artist to actually have their artwork purchased? And how validating for the art collector to actually be able to have a conversation with the artist regarding the piece that he purchased. Page four is one of our exhibits. We have many exhibits at Arts Center East. This one is Form and Function. So as you can see, lots of smiling faces of the people who attended that exhibit. Very much well represented, well represented. The next is Fiber Arts, which will be starting for this year, twenty twenty-five, on March first. That's our opening. So you are all invited to that opening. It's an absolutely lovely exhibit of textile art from many artists from not only New England, but last year we had representatives from Pennsylvania and California. So Arts Center East is not only known locally, it's also known nationally as well. We have artist talks. So artists come and talk about the art that they create. So this is a trunk talk. So Trima Tar came and talked about the quilts, the mosaic quilts that she designs. Again, very well attended, lots of very happy people learning about her creations. Page seven, we have rental space. The Marmar Gallery is rented on an annual basis to Academic Artists Association. They pay us a rental fee and they have an exhibit of the art of their members. So again, another very well attended event, which also generates some revenue for us. Page eight is a fundraiser that we held, was murder mystery. Again, very well attended and helps us generate the revenue that we need to stay in business. The last page, page nine, are all of the exhibits that we have planned for this year. The first date of every exhibit, so for instance, Fiber Arts, March first, that's when opening ceremony takes place. All of you are always invited to all of the opening ceremonies. So you have an open invitation. Student showcases starts on March thirteenth, but you have the flyer for the openings on that for that event. The annual members exhibit is also an excellent time for you to come and meet others from the community. That opening is going to be on April twelfth. I won't go through all of them for you. So that's basically the story of Arts Center East. Do you have any questions for?
Any questions? Mike?
Through you, Mayor. Good evening. Could you just touch base on your two new exhibits that you have here for August second and September sixth?
So August second is, let me find it on my sheet. So that is the veteran exhibit. That's going to be new this year. That's in collaboration with the New England Civil War Museum and it's also in. It coincides along with America Two Fifty. So the plan is to bring veterans from across Eastern Connecticut together, display their art. So we have veterans displaying art and we also hope to bring veterans into the art museum to enjoy the art.
Could you, have you reached out to the American Legion in town here?
That's the plan, American Legion, all of the various veterans groups.
And the Sustainable one?
Yep, that's also new. So sustainable art or art that sustains, that's new. Trying to reach out to other types of artists who use a different kind of medium so that they can talk about what it is that sustains our environment.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Terri?
Through you. Not so much a question, just a comment. So as you were saying, nonprofits are very vital to our community. So I operate a nonprofit and we sponsored five students from Rockville High for the spoken workshop. So it was, and I attended it and it was like amazing. You know, you sit there, then you're listening to the words and you're saying to yourself, oh, my God, how amazing is that? That they can just put this together like that and it just seems so, the flow is so easy. So it was very exciting. And it was like rewarding knowing that we got to sponsor some of the students from the high school to attend the workshop. So good job. Thank you.
Well, thank you for sponsoring the students.
Anybody else? Lori? Use your microphone.
I don't know if this is to you or to you. I know that the Arts Center is a vital part of this community in Vernon and I'm concerned why the contract's only for a year. Like, why isn't it extended longer, like a five years or something like that?
Well, we've done it before and we've been just extending it every year. They give us the same materials every year. So it, we could do it either way, but it's just as easy coming in here, doing it year to year because we're getting ready for budget season.
Is that helpful to you, Miss Jackson, to coming every year?
They've got to commit and defend their their budget anyway. Anybody else? Yes?
I I'd just like to thank you for coming. I I think we're truly blessed in our in our town to have so many wonderful nonprofits that provide so much for our residents. And I enjoy everything that you do. Thank you.
Arts Center East would not be what it is if it was not for our volunteers. So I recognized our board were very passionate, very hands-on. But I also need to recognize the many volunteers that volunteer at the center as gallery assistants and basically anything I need. All I need to do is put a call out and somebody comes and they help us. So we operate on three part-time employees and we depend heavily on the hands-on nature of our board and our volunteers.
Anybody else? Are you still on the board?
I'm sorry?
Are you still on the board?
What I was gonna say, great presentation and because I'm on the board, I can't vote.
Technically, you shouldn't, but. Sitting there, you can't, you can't take part, you can't take part at all. You know, that's why I went into the ethics. You can't take part at all. Either way, because any comments you make may influence the people here. That's why you had, you have to basically abstain from the whole thing. Because it also goes on to say that, you know, if if somebody that takes part in this, in 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 the discussion or the vote for something, you can actually negate the entire vote if it's if somebody puts up a stink about it.
Well, I wasn't planning on voting. I thought I could say I was on the board.
But you can, you're on the board, but you you really can't take part in any of the discussion. And that's how it's always been for the last many years as I can remember, even when I was on the council.
Okay.
Just for future.
Look at that in the ethics, because all you said was vote.
Laura?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. I see you have had the murder mystery fundraiser. Do you have any other fundraisers coming up to bolster your budget there?
So the next is a class that we have coming up. So we have a board member volunteering her time and materials. It's a lit wine decoupage class that we're holding and all the proceeds from that class will go back into Arts Center East.
Okay.
Purse bingo. Oh, we had purse bingo. You want to talk about purse bingo? Go ahead.
We had a, in December, we had our first ever purse bingo and we were able to make eleven hundred dollars in a couple hours. So, you know, we hope to expand on that this year, too.
Anybody else?
Mayor, if I may, may I? I also forgot a group of people that are vital to the Arts Center as well. I need to extend thanks to all of the Vernon employees, Public Works, that come and plow our parking lot, that come inside the building and help us maintain the building. I mean, they are amazing people and I just want to put a shout out to them as well. Very hardworking people and they keep the building looking immaculate. We get lots of compliments from people saying how professional Arts Center East looks and they're very proud to display their art there.
Excellent. All those in favor? And that's on the lease. Abstentions. One abstention, Phil Swinkler. All right, let's move on to motion number two.
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby authorizes the payment of fifty percent, five zero percentage of the utility cost for the property known as seven oh nine Hartford Turnpike, Vernon, Connecticut, and send fifty percent, five zero percent. Utility utility costs will be paid directly to the utility company as required through the Public Works budget. The remaining fifty percent, fifty percent, will be paid by the tenant, Vernon Community Arts Center, per said lease stated April twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen.
Seconded by Lori. So essentially what happens is Arts Center East pays the town. We have the contract for all the utilities through us and then the town of Vernon through Public Works pays the bill. That's that's what we're asking for today. If you went through the numbers in the back, it got a little way before they they start bringing in the millions. So, you know, we don't mind helping them out along the way. All right. Any questions about that? Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming. Arts Center East does an excellent job. And I will say that I remember the Colosseum picture there, the student thing, as when I went through and I thought just to myself, I said, that's a nice picture by a high school kid. And then I look here and I go, my heavens, he's a lot younger than I. So it wasn't an expectation they had. So anyway, I was curious about, we didn't have an income statement. We only had an expenses statement in with in the council package with a ended up net operating income of negative hundred and fifty-two dollars. So I was curious where your income is derived from.
Our our primarily comes from fundraisers and individual donations as well as memberships.
Like memberships provide what percentage, say, or something? I don't need to know the exact dollars. I'm just curious how you're, what you're doing fundraising.
I would say our largest fundraiser is our craft fair, our holiday craft fair. We netted about nine thousand dollars this year from that that one function alone.
So and membership?
Membership is right around the same same amount.
Oh, no kidding. So you have a lot of different sources of income.
Yes, we did.
Okay. That's why I was curious. If you got eighty thousand from one thing and the rest.
We wish.
Yes. And I do enjoy, and I did miss, unfortunately, I missed the terrarium one. I have something else that I, but I want to take that one whenever it happens again. So my debt remain down there. But you guys do an excellent job. As usual, volunteers in the town, just one of the things that keeps the town going. A lot of volunteers and a lot of organizations, but you guys are exemplary. And I do, I love the building. I love the look of the building from, you know, the Route Thirty side. So even though it's our building, but you guys.
Thanks. Bill? Through you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned the the one class that was a dedicated fundraiser, but I know you have a whole schedule of courses. Following on Brian's question, are, do those generate any significant net income for the center?
They do. They they generate an income. I wouldn't say it's a significant portion, but it does generate an income. The reason why the illuminated wine bottle decoupage is just because the teacher is donating their time. The vast majority of those, we we have to pay the instructor. So the revenue on that is shared with the instructor.
Understood. But it but it is net positive.
It is.
Thank you. And I I've been to a couple of those classes and they're excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Terri?
Sorry, sorry for you. I'm just a membership. It's is membership up or down?
Membership is up. So is attendance. So our attendance is at least three percent over fiscal year twenty-three up to fiscal year twenty-four. We have roughly a little over two thousand visitors. So broke the two thousand mark, which was really nice to see.
And that doesn't include the holiday craft fair. We don't, we can't possibly report the number. And that doesn't include the holiday craft fair. We don't, we can't possibly report the number of people coming in for that. And we had a lot of people this year from Branford, Guilford. It was really amazing.
And how do you promote your membership?
So we hit social media hard, and we also do direct emails, and we also are uh, members of a number of newsletters that are direct email as well through various arts organizations. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Hold on, let me finish this vote.
Go ahead.
All those in favor? Uh, abstentions. One abstention. Phyllis. Okay.
If I may, if you haven't followed us on Facebook, please do.
There you go. Make sure you guys uh, just put all these shows and stuff on our community calendar.
I will. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you at the center. Thank you.
All right, Brian?
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby approves the disposal of fixed assets for the town planner department as disclosed on the fixed asset disposal request forms.
Seconded by Mary Ann? All right, uh, as you guys know, the building department, the planning department, the engineer department, uh, fire marshal, the youth services, well, probate we don't do, but all of them will be moving. Um, the citizens block is moving right along, and uh, in fact, you know, we just got hooked up to electricity, which means now we can get the heat turned on and get the flooring put in there and, and, and put down. So we're almost done, but as those departments start moving out, they're going to start cleaning house at the same time. So planning uh, was the first one to make our list. Any questions on this? All those in favor? Uh, hold on. You gotta use your mic and just gotta make sure you stick to the questions.
Come on.
I'm old, too. Um, for the offices that are cleaning out, do you guys, for, I'm just asking a question, just in my brain. Um, when, like, I know you give me stuff back to the companies, you get a refund, but do you ever sell it, like, to, to the public to earn income that way?
We have a company that we sell it.
Okay.
It is, um, what is the name of that? Do you remember? It's like Public Surplus or something, something along those lines. And if you go on there, you can literally find tons and tons of stuff. But the first thing we do with anything we, where you're getting rid of is we make sure there's nobody else, any other.
Their department that could use it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Yep. All right. Any other questions? All those in favor? In unanimous. Right?
Mr. Mayor, the town council waives the reading of the minutes of the regular town council meeting of February fourth, twenty twenty-five, and that minutes of said meeting be approved.
Seconded.
Said that. Seconded by Terry. Uh, any deletions or corrections on that? All those in favor? Abstentions? Two abstentions. All right. Uh, so that passed Brian.
Mr. Mayor, motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Laura. All those in favor? In unanimous. Time to go. Got a question on it?